We have to wait for seven o'clock. Everybody's so quiet. Okay, well, it is seven o'clock, so let's go ahead and get started. Let's call the Johnston City Council Meeting number 22-24 to order. Cindy Rollcall, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
I'd like to welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening. If you are here for an item on the agenda, we would ask you to wait for that agenda item to come up and address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under Public Communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to invite the young people in the audience to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I see several young people. Could, would any of you please come up? All of you come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Just come right up here. And you have to take pictures of us. So many of us. This is too good. Come here with the rest of them. Can you take? Lead us.
(Inaudible) The United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is Public Communication. Oops, back up. Agenda approval. Mike, do we have any changes to the agenda?
None this evening.
Counsel, any changes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? It's moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Public Communications, we have one scheduled public communication this evening, and that is recognition and oath of office for promotional appointments to the police department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight is a pretty exciting night for the Johnston Police Department. As you can see, we've turned out with families in tow to celebrate some achievements of a couple of officers this evening. Tonight, we're going to promote two individuals. I'm going to ask Officer Nathan Johnson to come step forward with me first, please, and I'm going to read about some of his experiences while he joins us. Nathan Johnson has been an Iowa-certified police officer since 2017. He joined the Johnston Police Department in May of 2018 after serving with the Polk County Sheriff's Office as a deputy. Nathan hit the ground running as a new patrol officer in Johnston, growing his experiences in OWI enforcement, drug and criminal interdiction, and critical incident response. He's served as a field training officer in the department, successfully training five of our current officers. In May of 2022, Nate began our leadership development program, being selected as the officer in charge of our third watch patrol shift. This new opportunity challenged him to take his skills that he's developed as a proactive police officer and use them to build, develop, and lead the team around him. Nate has demonstrated his aptitude to apply the leadership and management principles being taught to him, and he's earned the opportunity for full-time promotion to first-line supervision. Effective tonight, he's being appointed to the rank of sergeant and will lead the first watch patrol shift, which is also known as night shift. In addition to Nathan's new supervisory duties, Sergeant Johnston will continue serving the department in the capacities of standardized field sobriety instructor and pepperball instructor, and he will also remain a team member of JPD's Quick Response Team, as well as a tactical operator on the Metro Suburban Emergency Response Team. Nathan has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Grandview University, is married with children, and resides in Norwalk. This time, Mayor, I'd ask you to step forward and administer the oath, and I do want family to feel more than welcome to come up to take pictures and video while this happens as well. Nate, if you want to step up there?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Nate Johnston.
I, Nate Johnston.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Now faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of sergeant.
Of the office of sergeant.
In Johnston, Iowa.
In Johnston, Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
While they're signing the oath of office, the next portion that we're going to do is the collar brass pinning ceremony. It's tradition in law enforcement that when you get promoted to a new rank, you have family or loved one that has the opportunity to pin you with that new collar brass. So I'm sure this has been choreographed already, but Nate and loved ones, whoever's coming forward to pin that, this would be the time.
No, no. Okay. Hey, real nice, and then you can be upside down, okay? Okay.
Next, I'd call forward Sergeant Kenny Egan. Sergeant Egan has been an Iowa-certified police officer since 1996. He worked with the Ankeny Police Department from 1996 to 2003. After a stint in the private sector, Kenny re-entered the law enforcement profession with the Johnston Police Department in the spring of 2006. Egan worked as a patrol officer until he was selected to be Johnston's very first school resource officer in 2007. From 2007 to 2011, Kenny was the SRO for every school in this district. Then in July of 2011, he was promoted to police sergeant, where he supervised the overnight shift for the next six years. Kenny performed duties as sergeant in the Field Operations Division from 2011 to 2019 and has led every patrol watch. In 2019, Sergeant Egan was selected to be the Investigations Unit Supervisor and has remained in that position until this promotion. Tonight, Kenny's being promoted to the rank of lieutenant. He's being assigned as a division commander of the Support Services Division and will oversee the Investigations Unit, Community Policing Unit, the Property and Evidence Section, and all crime scene investigators. In addition to Kenny's leadership duties, he's the department's lead driving instructor, a de-escalation instructor, a certified crisis negotiator, and is also a member of the Johnston Police Department's Quick Response Team. And he's been married to his wife Jill for 23 years, has three children, Olivia, Ella, and Sam, and currently resides in Ankeny. Adam, Mayor, swear the oath, please.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kenny Egan.
I, Kenny Egan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of lieutenant.
Of the office of lieutenant.
In Johnston, Iowa.
In Johnston, Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Again, Jill, at this point, you and your family, whoever's welcome to step forward and do the collar brass pinning.
Old Sam upside down.
Kenny, can you move like in the middle? There you go. Over a little bit more. There you go.
So that was the two scheduled promotions we have this evening, and I want to recognize one more person. And I've never done this before, but I'm going to start with an apology before I recognize someone. We have had the privilege of having an interim commander for the last year. I'd like Travis Overston to come forward, if you wouldn't mind, please. Travis has been an exceptional leader in this organization for the last year. He came in at a time when I asked him to take on a dual role, to be a consultant, to try to look at us from the outside organizationally. I've been the police chief at the time for about five years, and it's a good time to get fresh eyes on the organization from the outside. So Travis was brought in with a consulting capacity, but also in looking at his skillset. He's been an executive forever, 30-plus years. He retired as an assistant chief. I wanted him to live the life in the Johnston Police Department, knowing that each organization's culture is a little bit different. So Travis has spent the last 360-ish days working for the Johnston Police Department in a dual role, not only as an outsider coming in, trying to really assess our organization, our needs, and where we want to go, also working hand-in-hand with me, the command staff, the supervisors, but he'd lived the day-to-day life in the Support Services Division. And it was a way to really take a deep look at the future of what we're trying to establish here. And, you know, Travis and I have known each other for a very long time. We've worked together in many different capacities, but one of the greatest things that's come for me personally out of this is the friendship that's grown in the last year. And he has been a friend to everyone in this organization. He's been an exceptional leader, and for that, there's no gratitude that we can offer, but we do want to present him with a token of our appreciation with a shadow box.
No, I couldn't get away without saying something. You know, I think I can speak for the entire council when I say that, you know, one of the most rewarding things that we get to do, serving on the Johnston City Council, is to participate in the promotions of our police officers, as well as celebrate the successes of some of the members of the team. We couldn't be more proud of the police officers that we have serving us in this community. You know, I brag about it all the time. You know, I think we have the absolute best police department anywhere, anywhere in the country or anywhere else in the world. And the council hears me say this all the time, but public service is the most important service that we provide to the residents of Johnston. If our residents don't feel safe, then nothing else matters. So all of you do a wonderful job making us feel safe, and we appreciate everything that you do every day when you're on the job. We know that you put your life on the line for us every day, and we really do appreciate it. So thank you very much. And now we're going to lose the entire crowd. But that's okay. Thank you for being here. We are still under Public Communications. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council under Public Communications? Is there anyone left in the audience that would like to address the council under Public Communications? Seeing none, we will move on to public hearings, and we have one public hearing this evening. And that is to conduct a public hearing and consider Resolution Number 22-330, instituting proceedings to take additional action for the authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of not-to-exceed $225,000 Stormwater Management Utility Revenue Capital Loan Notes, and consider Resolution 22-331, approving and authorizing a form of interim loan and disbursement agreement by and between the City of Johnston and the Iowa Finance Authority, and authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of $225,000 Stormwater Management Utility Revenue Loan Notes anticipation project note, Series 2023B of the City of Johnston, Iowa, under the provisions of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said note. And we will open this public hearing at 7:18.
Sorry, I don't write those long descriptions.
Each of those notes have a very long title.
So this planning and design loan would fund the design work for the stormwater projects that were just getting started, the Green Meadows North, excuse me, Green Meadows West Huntington Project, as well as a project on Forest Drive. And so that would cover the design costs, and the plan is, once the design is completed, we would then issue the full loan that would cover the construction of both of those projects, as well as the Beaver Creek Stabilization Project adjacent to the gateway, down in the gateway adjacent to the Ignite and the park site. So this is the legal process we have to go through to close on that planning and design loan. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 7:19. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-331?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda.
We have, is there two resolutions?
330 and 331.
We did 331, so we need to do 330.
Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-330? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda. Item 7A, consider Resolution Number 22-335, approving and authorizing execution of an amendment, of an amendment number one, to the purchase, sale, and development agreement by and between the City of Johnston and the Johnston Golf Development LLC. Adam?
Good evening. In February of this year, the City Council approved a development agreement with Stoy and Khan for the development of a Bombers Golf project at 5055 Merle Hay Road. Since that time, staff and the Ad Hoc Economic Development Committee have been working with the developer on the site plan to move that project forward. The project's now in a position that the developers, beginning in earnest, the design work in order to break ground in April of 2023. As such, we have an amendment to that development agreement for your consideration this evening that brings, in alignment with that intention, several milestones to move that project forward in anticipation of a site plan approval by April, execution of another revised development agreement with some specific site plan details included in it, and the demolition of the 5229 Merle Hay Road structure that's there, and then commencement of construction. We do have the developer, Alan Stoy, here in attendance. If you have any questions for him on the project status, he was here, I believe, it was last council meeting with a short update as well. Otherwise, the only other item I would note here is that the amendment that is in the packet does have two dates for commencement of construction of those required improvements. That's August 1st. There was some discussion prior to the meeting of whether that should be August 1st or September 1st, and we kind of went back and forth, and August 1st is the date it made it into the packet here. But if council would like to revise that to September 1st, that would be the developer's preference, but they're willing to move forward with either one of those dates there. So I'm looking at Article 2, Section D, and then Article 2, Section 3, on those two dates that say August 1st, or it could be September 1st. If that, happy to answer any questions, or Alan, if you had any commentary that you wanted to add.
Adam, could you tell us again what?
Sure. The specific sentence I'm looking at is Section 2D. There, developer fails to commence construction of required improvements, as shall be defined in the new development agreement, or further amendment to this agreement by August 1st, 2023. So that is stating the developer needs to commence construction of the Bombers Top Golf, or Bombers facility by that August 1st date, or he would be in default of the development agreement amendments, and the city would have that repurchase clause that we've retained on that property that could come into effect at that point. That is, in fact, the date that could be August 1st or September 1st of 2023. It's currently drafted as August 1st.
And why one date as opposed to the other date?
In the initial drafts, there was just both dates floating around in there. That's the one that I put on there because we were running short on time to get it in there.
Okay.
But developer would prefer it's September 1st, but it's not material at this point. They're anticipating moving forward and breaking ground on the project well before that.
From our perspective, the date could be August 1st or September 1st.
Correct.
Okay.
And so, Adam, just so, I'm looking at the document. So you have sort of at the bottom of page two, top of page three, items A, B, C, or D, right? You have, so the demolition, submitting of the new development plan. So the demolition is April 3rd. New development plan is April 10th.
Entering into new development agreement of May 1st.
Right.
And commencement of construction before.
And then the last item, which could be August 1st or September 1st. So, and if any of those four are not, so if I'm reading in that paragraph that starts at the bottom of page two, if any of these four items, sort of these four kind of thresholds are not met, the city would have the ability within 60 days of any of those four of taking some action. Is that kind of the basic structure of this?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'm comfortable with changing the date in D from, to September 1st. I don't think that's a significant change, and obviously with all these other items built into it, I'm comfortable with that.
Other questions, counsel?
Okay.
Alan, did you have anything to add?
Oh, either data's fine. Paul, as a lawyer, you know, when our attorney first called August and September, he said, of course, well, September is better than August. We certainly plan to get everything done well ahead of even August. You know, the scheduled ceremonial groundbreaking should be on the community calendar as April 11th, and we're looking at the official groundbreaking sometime between April 15th and May 1st. And we've been working with Captain Johnson and the Fire Department to hopefully do a burn of that building the week of March 19th, I believe we're looking at. So we should stay ahead of all of these things, but yeah, so nothing to add. So we're excited. Keep moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions, comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-335?
I move.
Second.
With the amendment, right, changing the date from August 1st to September 1st in those two locations.
I agree.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. I continue to get a lot of questions, and so it's exciting to be able to tell people that it's moving forward. Item 7B, consider Resolution Number 22-334, approving a moratorium on enforcement of Section 153.07.8.8B of the City of Johnston Code of Ordinances regarding the requirement of fire extinguisher replacement, and require fire extinguishers be installed in accordance with the building and fire code per past practice.
Good evening. So at the beginning of the year, we restarted the rental inspection program with new staff, and then the starting of the program, we identified that, under the current ordinance, fire, portable fire extinguishers are required, both in the corridors, as well as in each individual dwelling unit. So this is a deviation from the fire code, which kind of gives you the either-or. You can do one or the other. A wholesale look at the code as written didn't provide us any latitude in those instances to give them that relief. So at the time, we decided to enforce the code as written, which was not previous practice, and so it had a large effect on a lot of very large apartment buildings. The most recent, the quote that they gave us was about $30,000, I believe, to put the portable fire extinguishers in the units.
put the, the portable fire extinguishers in the units that not, that were not previously required. It is our intention, when we review the code, the rental code, moving forward, to roll that back and match the fire code, which also matches the building code. The issue that we're going to have is that if we require, under the fire code, if we allow them to construct it as written, immediately it would be no longer in compliance with the rental code because it has a higher threshold. The, the two don't sync together. So what we're requesting it from council is relief from that until we have the opportunity to review the rental code and further adopt a code that would work with the fire code.
Does council, council have any questions?
I do. Adam, you're saying that right now the, the rental code requires a fire extinguisher used each rental unit, and you're asking that we take it off for a little while? Is that understanding?
So, correct. So what we're asking is to allow for us to enforce per previous practice and allow them to provide the fire extinguishers only in the corridors, not in the corridors, as well as in each unit.
So you're talking of the multi-unit rental unit, but not an individual rental thing?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
So you're talking of a multi-unit rental, rental apartment, apartments, and like, how about a single rental unit? How does that fit here?
Correct. The single-family dwelling units would still have to provide the portable fire extinguishers. It would only affect a multi-family.
Okay.
And it would only allow them to not install it in the unit. They still have to provide fire extinguishers in accordance with the fire code.
Okay. And so you plan to, so you plan to sync this with the fire code when the code is updated? Is that what you said?
That is our intention. Obviously, we haven't started down that path, but the intention is to, to sync all those together so that they, they follow the same track.
I'm, I'm just trying to think, think to this, why would not be one inside a dwelling unit versus just a corridor? Now, is that, I know the coatings, the code standard says something else, but practically speaking, it couldn't make a lot of sense to have one in each apartment unit?
It can. Interestingly, so in the fire code, the allowance to put it in the unit is actually to do away with the one in the corridor. So it, the fire code actually says you have to have the ones in the corridor, but then steps back and says, if you put one in each unit, then you don't have to have the one in the corridor. So the fire code and the building code kind of look at it from the, the standpoint of, you know, this is preferred, but if you want, you can go this route.
I mean, to clarify, what's in front of us tonight is putting, just is a halting of enforcement, correct? We're not setting policy. Is that right?
I understand that. I was just trying to understand.
Okay, but is, whether we, I, I do think at some point, we probably would be worthwhile having a discussion of whether it's in the unit or the hallway, whichever is best, but that's not what we're about tonight. Basically, we're just putting a moratorium on any enforcement until we, at some point in a later date, come back with, is, are you updating, will, will the change occur either in the change to the fire code or the rental housing code?
Well, the, so initially, it would be the rental housing code. If we go down the path to alter that to where we required in the units, we would then also have to change the fire code and the building code to match. Otherwise, all new construction would be, no longer be in compliance as soon as we issued the CL.
So you, so at some point in the future, in the near future, we'll, we'll see a change to the rental housing code, the fire code, and the building code?
Potentially. Yeah, I mean, we will have a change in the rental housing code. If we elect to match the, the fire code, we wouldn't need to make any necessary changes to that. That's already said, but if we change, if we decide to alter that section, we would then have to make amendments to that as well.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman, ready? Were you finished?
Yes, I guess. We can certainly address this at a workshop later. The issue really for the owners of the apartment buildings is the maintenance issue. It's easy for them to have their maintenance person go around every month and check and make sure that the fire extinguishers that are in the hallway are still good, but they generally, because of rental agreements, don't get into the actual apartments but about once a year. And so the problem with the ones in the apartments is the maintenance of it. And so that's why they're asking, if we've already got them in the hallways, why do we have to go into each apartment, make sure we keep them up? And it's, there's a huge cost factor to make sure. And then with people coming and going, sometimes they disappear, then they got to provide a new one. So it's, it's a huge cost factor for them. So that's what we're trying to do, is maintain the fire code, make sure that they have fire extinguishers, if it's a small fire, they can put it out, but not put a huge burden on to the owners and the, the maintenance people for the apartments.
This is a discussion that maybe we want to start at the Public Safety Ad Hoc Committee and then bring it, bring it to a work session. Thank you. Any further questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-334?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send you vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7C, consider resolution number 22-341, approval of a proposed compromise settlement and release made and entered into by and between Xenia Rural Water District and the City of Johnston, Iowa.
Evening. Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm here with you tonight on a proposed agreement of compromise settlement and release for the Xenia Rural Water District litigation that's been ongoing since 2018. We were able to circulate to you ahead of time the draft agreement, which has been passed and executed on behalf of Xenia, as well as attachments there, Exhibits A and B, A being a description of some area, and B, and A, page two, being a, a map with a physical representation of it, or a, a visual representation, and then Exhibit B being a, a draft motion in order with respect to dismissing the lawsuit. So that's what we're here for tonight, and I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Council, have any questions? Now, it's my understanding that the Xenia Board has already approved this agreement.
That's, that's correct. They approved it last Thursday evening.
Any council, or any questions, council? If not, do we have a motion to approve, to approve resolution number 22-341?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send you vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. And I want to thank you again, Bill and Manuel, for all your good work on this. And quite a journey. 7D, consider approval of claims in the amount of $1,27,220.40. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second discussion. Send you vote, please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. We covered city administrator staff comments as well as city council comments during the work session, so we will move on to the closed session. We have one closed session this evening per Iowa Code Section 21.51(c), to discuss strategy with council on matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation. Do we have a motion to, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I move. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send you vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhardt? Uh, cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Are you going to bring?
I'm gonna, I have to change recordings here real quick.